Okay, calling to order the Monday, March 3rd, 2025 meeting of the Sykesville Planning Commission. Welcome to everyone here. Fairly short's agenda, but some of it may take a little while, I don't know. Approval of the minutes, first order of business of February 3rd, 2025. I assume everybody's had the chance to look at those. Any comments, issues, changes? Nothing? Good, then I move that we approve the minutes of February 3rd, seconded by all in favor.
I'm gonna have to stay in, I wasn't here.
All in favor, one more time, all in favor. Good stuff. Good, Kevin? Second item of business is county updates. We have a written staff report. Claire is unfortunately not gonna be with us tonight to present it. I guess Eric Donner has had a chance to read that again. Is there anything anybody wants to comment on or ask questions about? In which case, we will move on to the business agenda, which is to consider, discuss, act on a conditional use request for assisted living at Warfield parcel B. And before we start, I'd like to make it clear my understanding of what we actually have to do as part of the approvals process in the zoning. When a conditional use goes before the BZA, we have to, comes before the planning commission for a recommendation. For our recommendation, one way or another, about whether we feel the BZA shortage shouldn't approve. And that's, as I understand it, a non-binding recommendation, but it is part of the process. That's what we're here to do tonight. Not to get into the weeds of, you know, what everything's gonna look like at the end of the day, simply to look at that and its effect on the town and its applicability. So Kevin, without sort of going through the whole thing in, you know, in great detail, if you'd like to just fill us in on your summary of the staff reports on that? Do you like to do that for us?
Yeah. Yeah.
He can give a summary.
Okay, yeah, so like Phil mentioned, the applicants requesting a conditional use approval for an assisted living facility to be located on parcel B of the Warfield development. So, and again, I'm gonna reiterate a little bit of what Phil said, but the reason that we are here this evening is because all conditional uses in the PEC zone need to be reviewed by the planning commission for recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And then the Board of Zoning Appeals will ultimately make the decision on that use. So, you know, we provided a concept plan that the applicant provided along with the staff reports. That's for illustrative purposes only. But the actual, any future design of the site will come at a later stage if the use does get approved. So at this phase, the planning commission is really only being asked to evaluate the use proposed and again, not the site-specific design in order to provide that recommendation to the BZA. So when we, so when we're looking at this, the PEC, or in the PEC zone, it establishes certain criteria for which conditional uses are to be evaluated. And that's the same criteria that the BZA uses when they are making their determinations on conditional uses. And those criteria should be used to make the, or to be the basis for the planning commission recommendation. So without getting into the full analysis of each one, those criteria are the number of people residing here or working in the immediate area concerned, the orderly growth of Sykesville, traffic conditions and facilities, the effect of the use upon peaceful enjoyment of people in their homes, the conservation of property values, the effects of odors, dust, gas, smoke, fumes, vibrations, glare and noise upon the use of surrounding properties, the most appropriate use of the land and structure, any applicable decisions of the court, the purpose of the regulations set forth herein. And then you'll notice there's a little bit longer of an explanation or analysis rather on that one that gets into the purpose and the intent of the PEC zone, which should certainly be factored into any recommendations that are being made. And then number 10 is the type and kind of structures in the vicinity where public gatherings may be held, such as schools, churches and the like. So again, we have, the applicants are here this evening. If you guys need to ask any questions to them, you can ask questions to staff as well as our legal counsel. And just know that discussion regarding this request can be carried over to another meeting if the planning commission feels that that is needed and appropriate in order to craft the best possible recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals. We didn't make a form, staff didn't make a formal recommendation in this staff report, but did recommend certain items that should be included in any recommendation to the BZA. And those are things like updated traffic study, required applicant to provide average annual emergency service calls for similar-sized facilities, ensure, to ensure emergency services can be maintained, and then also maintain strict adherence to the Warfield Commercial Center, new construction design guidelines for standards and signs. So that is sort of the overall gist of the staff report without getting into all the detail to, you know, in the interest of time. But again, if there's any questions about any of the specifics of the staff report, we're happy to dig into it a little bit more.
Good, thank you. So I'd like to invite, there are obviously a number of representatives for the applicants tonight, whoever wants to speak and fill us in on anything you feel we need to know, we'll be happy to listen and ask questions later.
I guess I'll lead off. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Dave Bowersox, 24 North Court Street, Westminster, Maryland. And I have the privilege to represent Rob Hobson, who was the principal of the developers who submitted this application. For those who may not know, Rob is local. He spends a good amount of time in town. His wife knows about some of it, but anyway. In other, and what we have here is a conditional use for an assisted living. So all of these units are going, or intended to be licensed, state-licensed assisted living units. This is a kind of a facility where the residents generally need some level of assistance. Sometimes it can be fairly acute. Sometimes it can be fairly minimal, but they're generally in these facilities because they can't manage an independent living situation on their own. So that's what this is all about. I think you've received, I know you've received the sketch plan to review and some other materials. On Friday, we submitted an appraisal report, a statement, and we also submitted a traffic impact analysis. So I'm not gonna read those to you. I'm just gonna try to hit the highlights here. One thing I may ask you to consider is if you feel you're in a position to do so when we've gone through this, in addition to the factors that you've been advised of and that your report embraces, to also consider making a recommendation to the board that the project as proposed is compatible with the comprehensive plan, your master plan. And since about 2009, state code has been requiring that kind of a finding. It tends to simplify things in my experience if it comes from the jurisdiction. That being said, I want to briefly touch on the points raised in your analysis. Analysis number one, number of people residing or working in the immediate area concerned. And the comment was, can have several effects, including increasing the overall senior population can in turn cause an increase in local real estate demand for new families. The principles of this project, they have other projects like this, same scale. They find that 70, more than 75% of the residents typically come from within five miles of the community, of the facility. Most seniors that are gonna reside here already live in or not far from Sykesville, unless there's some aberration in the demographic and the population trends. I will say that if you look generally, NIH has a study from 2019 that tends to back this up. The majority of people come from relative proximity to where the facility is, and that crosses the board. I'll also share with you that on Thursday, I was at a meeting of Lutheran Social Ministries of Maryland. And what that entity does is they operate Carroll Lutheran Village in Westminster and Miller's Grant in Eloquent City. Now, they're not pure assisted living facilities, but they do have assisted living components. Luther, Miller's Grant draws vast majority of their residents from within five miles of the complex. Carroll Lutheran Village is slightly different. It's a five, it's a 10-mile radius that encompasses, that encompasses the vast majority of their residents. So this is really not aberrational. The fact that 75% in the experience of Mr. Hobson and his partners come from nearby. So in terms of, will we have an influx of residents, families moving in here? Chances are, they're already gonna be here. And what this may do, we never know until it happens and we see where these people are moving from. It could open up some of the entry-level type housing for which there is a need, documented need in this county generally. You don't have to look too far for anecdotal stories. People my age who are talking about their kids wanna move back and start a family where they grew up in Carroll County, and they can't afford any place to do it. There, at this point, it looks like we're going to be adding 48 employees, perhaps?
Between 38 and 42.
38 and 42, excuse me. So that would be some additional input I can provide you for number one. Number two, orderly growth of Sykesville.
I'm sorry, for the 38 to 42, I saw the range of, sorry, of patients from about like 170 to 190. Is that, is that encompassing the range, like about 38 if we were to assume 170 patients and like 42 up to 190? Does that make sense?
I understand.
Or is there like an industry ratio that we can kind of like?
Yeah, I don't know that there is a direct correlation numerically proportionally to that.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Hobson, do you have?
So that's a good range, I think, right now. That's a good old spot. There's kind of a critical mass where you have to get to as far as, you know, a certain level of staff, and then you have to have a state regulation or licensing. But under assisted living code two, there's also, there's discretion in staffing, depending on the acuity, right? If it's low or super high acuity as a population in general, then staffing will have to go up and down depending on that.
And within that, is there, like, do you have a rough intuition or breakdown of like, it, like, I'm assuming like food services, like, you know, like of, like buckets of different employees? Like, is it 50% like food services and support?
I don't have that analysis.
Yeah, okay, okay, cool, thank you.
Number two, orderly growth of Sykesville. I really don't have anything to add to the comment that the staff included in their report. Traffic conditions and facilities, increased traffic the area will occur considering the parcel is currently vacant. I can't argue with that. An updated traffic analysis is completed. You want, they want to ensure an updated traffic analysis is completed for the new use that associates impacts of the future development of Warfield Complex and the Enclave. When the Warfield concept, when the Warfield preliminary plan was adopted, there was a traffic impact study done then. And it was assuming that this site would be a hotel use. The materials we've provided Friday indicate that the actual numbers for this use should be significantly lower. So it's automatically a reduction in traffic impact. It's addition by subtraction, in other words.
Does that mean that you've done a new traffic study or?
We have submitted a traffic impact analysis.
Okay.
Carl Wilson. Impact from the enclave at Parkside. Yeah, the impact from the enclave at Parkside, there is something we understand is already on the town's website that was submitted in concert with those plans. It shows that with the assumption of part of enclave and a hotel, that there, the impact is not problematic. So what this proposal does reduces the impact further. If you would, before commissioning another traffic impact analysis, we'd just suggest, consider marrying what you already have and what we have provided recently and determine whether that would be satisfactory moving forward. Nobody's trying to hide anything, but if we've already got it, why do it again? So thrive, this project thrive at Warfield will reduce accumulative, cumulative impact for its part even further than originally projected. Use of, effective such use on peaceful enjoyment of people in their homes. So there's been a recommendation, should have a number, an analysis of average number of emergency services for similar-sized facilities, estimated numbers of deliveries should factor into it. Impact, what I would add to this is the impact on emergency service calls can probably better be determined with greater certainty once we've got some engineering plans and we know what our full counts are gonna be, population counts, exactly where the entrances, exits, how they're gonna operate. By that point, you'll have full APFO, information to review, and would be a much more accurate review. So I would just suggest that that might be a more appropriate way to take a look at it. Thrive, this, 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 Mr. Hobson and his other partners, they're gonna have contracts with private providers. That's the way they do it now. Private ambulance company typically they have agreements with public EMS that any EMS visits, be it fire or ambulance, will be lights off, sound off. And this comes up in connection with another one of the topics of the analysis. So they do that to preserve the peace in their community because the last thing their residents wanna hear and see is sirens and lights. And it's also because it's considered a neighborhood. I mean, they don't, they don't want to make waves. Deliveries and dumpster pickup are gonna be strictly limited to business hours, both for the sake of residents and neighbors. So that would be what I have to add. Conservation of property hour, property values is next up. Impact to property values is heavily dependent on the quality and aesthetics of the facility itself, is what your staff recommendation says. I can't argue with that. You've received Ryland Mitchell's report from Lipman and Associates. At page three, he comes to a conclusion that in studying four different facilities in the general area and located in different residential and commercial, if any, development all contexts, the presence of a senior assisted living facility is not a detrimental factor in decision-making process of a homebuyer, is what they've concluded. We further believe there's no basis to believe, to conclude that a proposed senior assisted living facility on parcel B will have a negative effect on the value of surrounding residential real estate. One of the things that is a reality I think we have to keep in focus is Route 32 in and of itself is something of a buffer from one side of the road to another. Effective voters, number six is effective voters, dust, gas, smoke, fumes. The comment included a phrase, delivery noises and emergency vehicles responding to the site would be the most common noise concern. And that's, that would go without saying if we're dealing with something that's entirely unknown. Basically, I'm not gonna stand here and read the same thing I read to you for the other one, but it's not, the way this situation operates with this applicant is lights out, you know, sound off for the emergency vehicles, and we've talked about the daylight pickup, et cetera. Most appropriate use of land and structure. I really have no comment on that. I agree, a determination on the most appropriate use of land is entirely subjective without a clear indication of what the surrounding uses are gonna be. Decisions of the courts, I'm, I'm gonna, no additional comment on that one because there's really not much to say. There's no opinions that I'm aware of that would have any bearing on the impact of this. Purpose of the regulations is set forth is number nine. Will the proposal aid, and I'm cutting to the end, the conclusion. Will the proposal aid in encouraging development of excellent design and architecture with a mix of uses that will create a synergy of uses, efficiency of design, contribute to a reduction of vehicle miles traveled? We've given you some kind of rough rendering of what we have. We don't have final architectural done. We don't, have not really started the engineering to any real extent. But that'll give you some idea of what Mr. Hobson and his partners are considering. Again, the traffic, vehicle miles traveled, traffic's gonna be relatively low impact as per Carl Wilson's report. The trend, if we can call it a trend with this parcel, is we seem to be reducing the impact further in lieu of a hotel. So cumulatively is, you know, like that. And number 10, type and kind of structures in the vicinity. Your comments have identified Sykesville middle school. And so I have no further comment on that. I don't know that it's really germane to the discussion. If you have any questions for me or anyone else here, I'm happy to address them, but that's the extent of my.
Thank you.
Presentation.
Questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just a, one clarification just real quick, and again, I appreciate Mr. Bowersox's comments about everything. You know, some of the comments that were made in the, in the staff report were really just to get issued on the table for discussion. It wasn't necessarily an expectation that the applicant was gonna have all of this information necessarily available. We just wanted to make sure that it was out in the open and that we were trying to be clear on what the expectations were should this project move forward, particularly at a design level. So when you come back with a concept plan, that we all made sure that, hey, we know we had an issue with potential traffic concerns or what the design of the structure was gonna be, things of that nature. So again, we appreciated the information that was, that was submitted, but, you know, again, as we get further along this process, you know, I think that's when we probably talk about the specifics and the specific impacts of those.
Right. I agree.
Comments, questions? Anyone? Nope? So that area in, sorry, in the design doc, the tunnel there is important for recreation. I saw that in the comments. It was going to be maintained, whether it was there or a different site. And I think it relates to the delivery because that's the delivery entrance too, so the fact that we're getting like a delivery traffic analysis is good. I'm wondering if we've ever done a pedestrian analysis. Is that like something that, that the town does? Because my intuition is that it has a lot of foot traffic, but, you know, just from observing, but like, it would be cool to like, see like the actual impact because that, you know, that's, that connects two parts of the town. It connects the townhouses at Warfield up to Miller Cooper for Park, and I know that'll have effect on, on pedestrian.
I mean, as far as I know, I don't think we've ever done a pedestrian analysis through that specific corridor there. But I don't see why it's something that can't be done one way or another.
Okay.
There, there was a study of connectivity done when we did the original PEC preliminary plan.
Okay, cool.
We didn't have any kind of foot traffic projections. That's not something typically that is done.
Okay, okay.
But there is a connectivity analysis if you go back and look.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, I think one of the things that alleviate like what exists now is just the road. You know, there's no sidewalks through there.
It looks like, it looks like there is a, like a sidewalk that actually connects everything now.
We were trying to connect it with the walking path. I walk it all the time with the walk-in.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Oh, yeah.
With the street when we're walking out.
One of the things the planning commission has to do is to make sure that changes and applications are actually sympathetic to and fit with the comprehensive plan. I looked at what the comprehensive plan says. There is a placeholder in there. It specifically talks about a hotel, but it also says that the hotel is not cast in stone, just because it mentions a hotel. We don't have to have a hotel there. We could have something else and it's up to the planning commission to be flexible when necessary. And I think that's, that's appropriate to point out to us tonight. If we did decide to recommend this, we're certainly within the bounds of the language of the comprehensive plan. Yep. Anything else?
So in reference to the traffic plan, and I haven't seen it, and so, and maybe I missed it. But do you have, can you speak to that just a little bit more in reference to the traffic?
What would you like to know?
Well, I wonder if there's any expected traffic volumes or if you have any idea of?
There's projected carries.
Yeah, in the letter, there's a projection, active traffic count that kind of takes what it was based on the hotel use. And I don't remember the exact numbers, you probably have them, but then it shows a reduction in the count based on peak hours and non-peak hours. So it was like a traffic count, kind of refresh of what was done prior in the letter form, so it would be easy to see those counts.
All right, and then you touched on some of my questions that I had, so I'm just going through. So one of the things that gets talked about a little bit in the PEC plan is how there's an interconnection with other properties around, you know, the entirety of the parcel. How does this fit in with the rest of the plan that all of you in Warfield are planning to do? Like how, how does this work from like a symmetry perspective in the grand aspect of what we're trying to accomplish with the PEC overall?
Well, it's a use that is provided for by your code and is consistent, in our opinion, with the purposes of the PEC zone. This is a commercial use in the PEC zone. I guess I, I'm lacking the same crystal ball that staff had for what the other proposed uses for the complex are going to be. So the only, I, the only thing I could tell you would, about that would be speculation. So it's, it's very difficult for me to answer that concretely at this point in time.
From a relationship standpoint, I think it's important. We tried to honor with our designer, Myer Architects in Philly, to look at that connectivity and bring that kind of walking path through the tunnel and kind of make that connected to the walking path and those other recreational activities. I think it was also important to look at how they looked at the plan and the view corridors that are there. You'll see those are kind of hard to see with the shade. So we tried to be sensitive to that while maximizing from a, you know, efficiency and also financial stability and feasibility standpoint, the site and unit counts while honoring those view corridors in relation to the whole plan.
Yeah, the visual, I think, is very important. You don't wanna put the cart before the horse at this point or anything like that, but without knowing what it looks like, you know, that's one of those things that, it's hard to jump on the bandwagon, but the idea is there. That's just something we really are concerned with.
And I guess to that point, one of the things that is also included in the original, you know, planning documents for what the design guy looks like are sort of like sightlines and getting an idea of how we're gonna see things from 32. I don't know if you have a vision, and I realize you don't have a design, I get that, but, but I'm interested in sort of how, like what's the difference between if you would have had a hotel there and if you have this, is it gonna be similar? Is the structure gonna be a lot different in reference to sort of what that would look like? Do you have a sense of that?
We're working towards that, I think, in that, in the next phase. Once we know that the use is there and we can do the assisted living facility, I think that's the next step. So we haven't gotten there yet, but that'll just take some more time and money with our architect to kind of do those elevations and renderings and perspectives, so.
And with this six-story structure, and I saw the garage there, is it six stories on top of the garage? Is the garage incorporated into that? Can you?
Yeah, well, the way we're envisioning it is would be almost like a step down. So as you get down, you know, you're sensitive to the six stories as you come out of the tunnel, so you're not hitting at seven there versus somewhere else. And on the other side would be, but as we, as we refine unit counts and densities in the program, that'll, that'll shift. But the idea, at least my attempt right now, is to make sure that we're, you know, obviously following, we don't, we don't wanna have to pursue any other variances or anything like that. So we're trying to stay within that PEC six-story zone order that has been given.
Okay.
Well, and if I can point out, part of the, the guidelines for the, for the new construction there does spell out, you know, certain massing and size requirements and, you know, how things are actually laid out. So it's actually, it actually talks about a maximum of 50 feet. So it's actually, it actually talks about a maximum of 50 feet instead of, you know, six or seven stories. Again, that was one of the recommendations that we made was, you know, strict adherence to that document so that we did put some parameters on what buildings should build.
I have been able to find the comparative trip counts.
Thank you. Thanks for, like, I appreciate it.
Given enough.
I think you want, I think you want to tell me.
The proposed Warfield memory care during, this is a morning peak hour. Is showing 20 trips in as compared to 29 for the hotel. Morning peak hour trips out are 14 as compared to 51 for a hotel. The net difference morning peak hour is 46 trips. The evening peak hour, the Warfield parcel B assisted living in is 18. The hotel was projected at 38. So there is a, it's a negative difference, but I'll call it a positive difference of 20 trips. Trips out with the memory, the assisted living facility. Trips out in the peak hour PM, 28. For a hotel, it was 36. And for a blended result of 26 fewer trips during the peak hour. So it's, it's, I mean, it's a palpable difference.
When was the hotel analysis done though? Do you happen to know? It was a pre-COVID?
Ours, no, we, we updated, we, yeah, we, we updated it since then. So we updated it post-COVID, and then Rob and his group went with the same consultant.
Cool, thank you.
And then on other infrastructure, and I might have missed this if it's already included. On other infrastructure like water, particularly water, is there a difference in a hotel use and assisted living use? I'm just not sure in terms of what the expectation would be from a capacity management perspective for the water piece. Have you thought about, I don't know if that's, and I realize it could be too far down the road and I really, I get it.
I can, I can answer that too. I mean, as you all know, Warfield already has its water and sewer capacity, I believe we're 150,000 gallons per day. And that's really a site plan and an APBO issue, but when we were talking earlier tonight, I actually, Rob and, Rob and I were saying that we should, we should look at that just so we know what we're, you know.
What the rest is, right?
But I, I believe, as I recall, as I recall, hotel was more intense, but we need to go back and look at it and certainly will have to for APBO. That's a que, that's a question we can answer.
Well, there's, there's a, so it's hard for me to look at any one parcel and one particular piece of this project by itself. I think about the entirety and how they interact with each other. And always there was a goal to be able to have a place where you have, you know, that live, play, work sort of mentality within that entire community. And certainly this offers some portions of the work portion of it, where you could have folks that are living and Parkside be able to go over, the enclave go over and, and work in this facility, and that's great. And so that's why I'm asking the questions, is that how, how does this part of the project overall interact with the other ones? Again, I don't know if you have anything more you want to say in reference to that.
I mean, I, I think that's the next level.
And that's, this is, this is merely an observation, it's not a critique. That's why it's kind of difficult to put a presentation on like this about a project.
I get it.
Before we've.
Yeah, and so, I mean, again, if you had, you know, I'm asking because, you know, there's people here that are, are part of the broader thing. And so it's one of the things that, you know, I particularly have interest about sort of what the future vision is. So if you had anything to share, I wanted to be able to offer you and the public to be able to hear it. Which gets to my next question in reference to it. Has there been any sort of public engagement in reference to this project where you've reached out to anyone to find out sort of what they're thinking about in reference to this initiative?
Well, the adjoining property owners, which, you know, I recommend to all my clients to do before you even think about filing it. I can't address that, I don't know if anyone else can.
So I've engaged in conversations with North Rock Roman, being directly adjacent to us because we have a gas line in front of us right through the middle of my site. That's a problem. And by the way, North Rock Roman, they, they have been incredible to work with, responsive, got the answers right away. We're already engaged with BGE in that, in that process and kind of filed that preliminary kind of information that they need to even start talking about, so.
And Jeremiah, I would add, I would add that we, over time, have, as the master developer, have talked to the folks at Parkside and about different things that could happen on parcels A and B and Teller. And as you imagine, every time you get a lot of different comments and, and some people like the idea of some of the hotel friends and some people hate it and even though it's shown in there. So have we, you know, we haven't had, well, we had a, we haven't had a formal meeting with regard to this particular use there, but there's certainly been engagement with the HOA over time about what might happen over there. And, and I believe, I guess everybody, Parkside was put on notice too as part of all this, weren't they? I think they were.
And obviously, there's this, this meeting tonight, right? I mean, this is a public meeting and all the.
I should also point out as well that as part of the process, when I guess the preliminary plan stage, that's a public meeting and a particular in the whole thing. Anybody's gonna get the chance to chip in whenever they, whenever they come to that.
I was just wondering if you already had reached out to anybody and if you're getting any particular feedback in reference to it? Cause it could influence, you know, our collective opinion in reference to how we'd want to move forward. In terms of the facility itself, is this, like, I don't, I'm not sure what the vision is necessarily. Is this something where it's like 24/7 care? Is that sort of the vision? So you'd have staff there all through the night?
Absolutely.
That sort of thing?
And staff drops down, depending on level, acuity level, it's up to us to stagger properly for life safety and things like that. So it will, it will vary, but yes, 24/7.
Okay, and is, are the people that go in, and this might be too much, but, you know, just tell me if it is, but is it sort of a thing where you go in and like you live there for a while? Or is this something that you go in, it's more temporary, you're there for a few weeks at a time or even days at a time? Or is this something that you're there for extended?
I mean, our residents are gonna be 70 or older.
Yeah, okay.
This is not a 55 plus that thing, this is a, so the answer is yes, they will be there for a long time. And the idea of licensing all the beds as assisted living beds is as people become more acute and needs of their treatment get more intense, we can kind of turn on additional services in each of those rooms to make sure that they can stay in place.
Got it.
We're even allowed to actually under law, we can actually, if somebody gets ill and actually goes into hospice, they can maintain and stay in that building until they die, which is nice. Doesn't have to last, but that's a, that's a nice function.
So it's sort of like, like I've been in other places, my wife's grandmother was in a location where you go into a place and it was, it started off in like a little house and then it moved into an apartment, and then it moved into more of assisted living, and then it was more hospice care. Like you have a phase of that, that's sort of the vision, is that maybe towards the end of it?
Like low acuity to high acuity in the assisted living piece, and then there's a memory care piece in the unit count still kind of to be determined. Where if you really become with the metro, so you can kind of live the rest of your time out.
Yeah, got it.
Yeah, this is not a CCRC. It's an assisted living facility, but I think as Rob's indicating, it's, that, it says assisted living, it's one license, but there's a range of services throughout.
And there is no buy-in like Fairhaven, you know, accident, they're buying the model where you can progress through that CCRC model. They'll keep you there forever, so ours is more, it's a rental model.
Got it.
And just, so, so if there's someone who doesn't know, Mr. McLeve, Steve McLeve is here from the owner, he's the owner representative. Mr. Hobson is the applicant, Rob Hobson. And Jim Mathias is with us also tonight, he's the civil engineer from DDC. So if there's no other questions, no, no for me.
I had one more, and based on the conversation, I know in the staff report, and I mentioned this to you as I walked in. Based on the information that you heard, would the staff have a recommendation for the planning commission tonight?
Well, I'll jump in and I'll just say, you know, again, when we were analyzing this, again, we just kept going back to the purpose of the PEC district and kind of reiterating that compatibility piece. And without knowing what the other, say vacant lots or even the historic buildings were gonna be, you know, it's difficult to make a formal recommendation to the, to the planning commission about what your recommendation should be. I think knowing that going forward is that, you know, once you do start, you know, for lack of a better term, piecemealing and development together, you know that's gonna be a challenge for the planning commission in the future. So I think it's best just to keep that in mind, whatever recommendation you end up making to the board of zoning appeals, that, you know, there's going to be challenges down the road on how we plan the other, other pieces of the.
I guess maybe a thing that, that I just put out there is, is there a way to remedy that? As we navigate forward, do you have any perspectives in reference to that? And I'm thinking from maybe the master developer perspective or maybe from yours in terms of giving us sort of a vision of what the future could look like.
I, I gave up trying to predict the future when the Red Sox and Bill Buckner.
Those were, those were tough days, you know, I lived in New England myself, so.
I, I can't, you wouldn't want to trust my speculation on something like that. The one thing I will say is there's, compatibility is something that's addressed and has been addressed for a long time in case law. One that, a case that I've, I've known for a while but had to use recently is a case called Freo versus Triangle Oil Company. It's a conditional use case from the upper eastern shore, mid-eastern shore. And basically, one of the issues was whether something compatibility, a general compatibility requirement in a code opened up the question of challenging whether a use itself was compatible. I'm just being very general. But the one thing the court said, it was the then Court of Special Appeals, was when you have a zoning ordinance that says this use will be a conditional use in this district, it rec, it essentially expressed recognition that there's qualities of this use that make it compatible in that zoning district. I know it's not exactly the same thing, but what the court went on to say is in that kind of a situation, you test the conditional use based on traditional conditional use principles I won't go into. And it says that the fact that it is a conditional use in the zone answers the compatibility question in the affirmative. But I mean, that's, that's all I've got, it's not perfect, but you asked and.
I guess what I'm really saying, just to cut through it, is it would be nice to see sort of a vision of what the future would look like if, you know, as it becomes available, and I realize that, you know, we've been talking about this for a long time. But, you know, I can speak for my part of the town that, you know, I'm interested in understanding what that looks like with some more definitiveness as we navigate forward. And it would certainly make things a little bit simpler for me as I'm trying to figure out, does, is this a good match with that? I certainly see the positive of this type of, this type of a facility coming into our community and serving our community. I certainly understand that, that's not really the issue. The issue is, is then how does it blend in with the rest of the community? And does it make sense from a broader master planning sort of perspective? And I get that we're working through that and, you know, it's a process. But wherever we can work to figure that out in the future, I think it would be beneficial to everyone.
I think the owners would like to know what the future looks like in terms of the build-out. But we don't, we just don't know, it's, we're, you know, still.
I understand.
Finding users for parcels and they don't come all, all at once.
This, this parcel, it's a discreet parcel, I mean, I went out and walked it. And, you know, it's bigger than it looks on the map when you walk it. It's got some topographical challenges to it, which I'm sure you're gonna address. But as a conditional use, I remember sitting in this room for some long, long late nights when we were putting together the language of the PEC zoning with a previous town manager who needed perhaps more guidance than you did, I can say. And we, we did list it as a conditional use, we didn't put it as a prohibited use. It's, it's there because we thought that it would at some point have a function, but it should come back to us because we may have some issues with it that we would need to deal with as body. From that point of view, I think it's, it's, it's a reasonable use for that particular property. That, that property is bounded by 32 on one side, it's bounded by North Rock Roman on the, on the top side, on the third side, cause it's basically a triangle. It's, it's bounded by the spur of the road that goes up to, to North Rock Roman. So the idea that you're gonna have connectivity with the other parts of the, of the, the actual, you know, parcel A and, and, and the other ones on that side, it, it, it just doesn't lend itself to that kind of connectivity, I think. The only real connectivity comes on, on the area of the roundabout where, where the, the roads are gonna go. And from my point of view, as long as the, you know, the walkability of Sykesville and that subway and, and the access that people have through there is considered and, and, and is maintained, I don't really have a problem with, with the actual use of it as a, as an assisted living facility. We want commercial facilities over there, we don't want it to be all residential. From my point of view, on the, the years that I've been on here, it's probably the best use that I've heard come before for that, for that particular property. I've heard all sorts of suggestions, most revolving around gas stations and WAWAs. And I, I think this is definitely a, a, a step above that and an improvement on that. So I would personally say that it's, it's an interesting and positive development at this particular stage. I don't know if anybody wants to ask any more questions or has any more comments at this stage on this. Okay, do you? Are we ready to move on this particular application?
I think so.
Think so?
Yes.
Okay, well, I will try to construct a motion which satisfies everybody, this particular point, okay? So let me start out. I move that we recommend to the Board of Zoning Appeals that they approve the application for conditional use of Thrive at Warfield for a assisted living facility to be placed on parcel B of the Warfield Commercial Cultural Center. Let me go back to this now, so I've got some other language. But the, that recommendation includes the future development of the Warfield complex along with the enclave at Parkside and requires the applicants to provide an updated traffic study in, in relation to the Warfield complex and the, the enclave at Parkside and provide average annual emergency service call to similar sized facilities to ensure emergency service vehicles can be maintained. And also follow strict adherence to the Warfield Commercial Center New Construction Design Guidelines and Standards for Signs 2017 edition. I hope I got that right. Do I have a second for that motion? If anyone seconds that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Good, thank you. I'm sure we'll see you again.
Yeah, good luck.
Yeah, good luck.
Yeah, it's great.
Good, now. Thank you very much. So, that being said, we move on to town updates.
Yeah, so, so not a lot, joking, might be elaborating this once, but the South End Streetscape project, hoping to get, or hoping it's starting within the next few weeks, right?
That's right.
So, we're kind of, we're kind of phasing that, that project out a little bit, so it's not all gonna be done at one time because we don't wanna have Main Street torn up, you know, as weather gets nice and we start to have events downtown. So the first phase is gonna probably, looks like it'll be a Baldwin Drive and the station parking lot, you know, up and connecting to Oklahoma. So hopefully getting, getting that going, like you said, here in the, in the next few weeks, so it'll be a good project.
Both exciting and terrifying.
Yes.
Anytime we eliminate a little bit of parking for, you know, even if it's only a two-month period, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna make things tight for a little while. Anything new with the restaurant? They're still working through, you know, their, their due diligence to make sure they have their design kind of set before they, they pull the trigger on anything.
My wife demanded it, I.
If they do everything that they want to do there, it's gonna be something pretty special.
Is there any updates on the, the work schedule for Springfield Avenue?
Were you demanded to ask that question?
It was after directed traffic. It was after directed traffic the other day.
So, uh, I know the contractor out there still has, you know, a couple of odds and ends to do along Springfield Avenue, but I know State Highways is looking to pave as soon as possible, as soon as the weather is consistent.
Consistent, yeah.
Um, so, you know, I've been saying, it looks like it's gonna be the April timeframe where you're gonna see some paving. You know, I will say, the, the town has a small stormwater project there along Central Avenue, and then again, depending on uh, how long it takes the contractor to do some of those odds and ends still along Springfield, uh, might delay that a little bit, but, you know, that's the goal is, you know, before we get deep into spring.
Mm-hmm. Good. And is there any updates on the, the, um, mechanic store on the corner there?
Uh, ever since we approved the use, I haven't, um, seen any movement there, it seems like, it seems like we're starting doing less, less work there.
Yeah, I don't think it's been open since then.
So, I do, like, uh.
Sidewalk isn't stopped.
Yeah.
I walk it every day.
I, I will put on my to-do list to reach out to those property owners and update on that, um, and just, yeah, see, see where they, where they stand. And then I will also note too, um, regarding the Enclave, uh, the subdivision, they're just still working through the stormwater stuff at the county, so as soon as they have those, those preliminary stormwater rules from the county, we'll be able to bring it back to this body for a, a formal preliminary plan, uh, vote at that point.
Great.
Um, one thing I was gonna ask, if you do close down the downtown parking lot, is there any way to open the maintenance parking lot for parking on the weekends? Just to, like, kinda like we do on, on farmer's market days?
We can look into it, just to see if we can open up.
To, to, some, to.
Add a little bit, right, yeah, that's all it is.
Okay.
Questions, issues? Good? No, in which case then I move that we adjourn.
Take it.
Taking it, all in favor?
Aye.
On the way, good meeting, thanks, folks.